Good evening and welcome to Southeast Delco School Board of Directors Committee of the whole meeting for Thursday, April tenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Dr. Sanchez, committee reports.
Good evening, Madam President. Good evening, board members. We are going to start tonight with a number of items from Dr. Gibbs Tapper. Dr. Tapper, listen, we're going to get you a mic.
Thank you. So this evening, I'm asking, I will be asking the board to approve an educational contract between Southeast Delco School District and Bancroft School. It is for a student who recently transferred here into our district, who is currently already attending this school. All supporting documents should be attached to your documents. We're also asking for the school board to approve a contract between Southeast Delco School District and Fairwall School. We have three students who have been attending the program, and we're asking for their contract to be renewed for this school year. We have one student who will be graduating in June, so this will be her last year attending this program, but there are three students that we are asking for the funding to be approved for those three students for this current school year, the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And the last contract that the Special Education Department is asking for approval is for Aspire Educational Health Services. This is for next school year, twenty-five, twenty-six. We started with this company this school year for them to provide us consulting and contracting with them for school psychologists. So we want to continue our relationship with them for psychological services, to complete psychoeducational evaluations, as well as looking into their behavioral services, services for next year, and we have the amount there that we would not like to exceed, and we have supporting documents as well provided to you for those three contracts. Any questions?
I do have a question.
Yes, Ms. Wolf.
For number one.
Yes.
You asked for one student?
We have one student currently there already. This school is located in New Jersey, and we have one student with a pretty significant educational disability that we have approved for them to go. And we recently received another student who was already attending the program. We did review the documents, and in order not to disrupt his education at this time, at this late year, we wanted to continue. We have reached out to the school, talked to them about the student, asked them about the progress he's been making thus far. They said he's doing very well. At his upcoming IEP, we will be reviewing what his IEP goals are and looking at a reevaluation when that time comes and make sure that this program is currently, it still continues to be appropriate. However, as I said, he has been attending this program for, I believe, three years, and the family just moved to Southeast Delco. So it's been a very rough transition for them, trying to get busing, transportation, and those different things. So the last thing we want to do is disrupt his education at this point, especially because he's been making meaningful progress there.
So it's not just one student, it's two?
This contract is for one. The other student's contract has already been board-approved.
So for forty-five, I'm just curious, where is, what part of New Jersey is it?
Bancroft, I would have to get back with you. It's not, it's right over the bridge, it's not far. We do have some other students that are attending a school in New Jersey called Yale School, and there's three different campuses, which is in New Jersey. Bancroft, I'll double-check and get back with you, but it's not too far into New Jersey. We really kind of reserved this educational placement for students, as I said, with really, really profound.
Oh, okay.
Mount Laurel.
So this is for bus service?
No.
For the forty-five thousand?
This is just for academic education.
Oh, just for academic?
Yes.
So it's not for, does it include the bus, sir? Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Thank you very much, Dr. Gibbs Tapper.
You're welcome.
Dr. Jeff Ryan?
Hello, everybody.
Hello, good evening.
Number four, we are asking for, along the same lines as Debbie just said, we're asking for an approval for a contract with Bucksmont Academy. We have used Bucksmont in the past. They take both regular ed and special ed kids. We haven't had a new enrollee there in a while. They're down on McDay Boulevard, down in the Woodland area. This particular kid is a result of an expulsion agreement that you had already approved, that we agreed to cyber with a pending placement at Bucksmont. Bucksmont has accepted this student, the student has accepted to go to Bucksmont, so we're asking for the contract. You will see, we will have a fix for the special ed rate. The special ed rate is actually more than the regular ed rate. That will be a bolded item for next Thursday. This student in particular is regular ed, so it doesn't affect the student, but just so the motion is correct with the cost per diem. Number five, there was a group assault on Coach Street about a month or so ago. These are four of those kids. We've held expulsion meetings with all four families, they've all agreed to placements in either our cyber or alt-ed programs, so these are already on their way, signed and delivered with parents. There were more than four kids that were involved with that. The reason that you don't see all of the kids on here is because we have verbal agreements with the rest of the kids for an expulsion agreement to Job Corps. We can't put those expulsion agreements on this agenda until you approve number six, which is the Job Corps agreement. So once you approve the Job Corps agreement, which I'll get to in a second, you will see the remainder of the group assault kids on May's agenda. Again, parents have already verbally agreed, they're on their way to going, we just need the Job Corps agreement to be approved before we can approve the expulsion for a Job Corps agreement. The Job Corps agreement itself, we did let you know last month, we were still ironing out the details, they have been solved. The hang-up was over clearances. Job Corps is a federal agency, so they follow federal guidelines, so we did talk to Mr. DiOrio, he gave a suggested language, they inserted that language, so the agreement is good to go. The good part about Job Corps is two things. One, for kids who take this option, it does give them a skill or trade to go into the world with. Right now, the local center is down here near the stadiums on South Twentieth Street. They tend to look at kids for like the technical positions. However, if kids want to go into a trade, there are two other locations, I think one's in the Poconos and one's out near Harrisburg, that if a student chooses that vocation, they will then put the kid up in residency up there, they'll go through the program there. All three campuses are available to our kids, so we're asking you to approve this agreement. The other good part of this agreement, in the way that it's crafted, is it allows us to keep our kids on roll while they're enrolled in Job Corps, and not only do they get the cert, but if they fulfill all the requirements, they can also get an Academy Park diploma on the backend, so they walk away with both things, even though they may not have gotten into job care for the best of reasons, but they end up getting both things on the end, and it helps us maintain our graduation rate because they end up getting an Academy Park diploma, they're not just lost to the GED world or Job Corps world. So for us, we believe it's a win-win. Once you approve the agreement, we've already got kids slated to go, it's just tying everything together. Number seven is the DJ for the spring senior events. We did it for basketball, we're doing it for the spring senior events. Everybody was happy with it in the winter, so hopefully everybody is happy with it in the spring, and you can see that it comes at a cost of eight hundred dollars for the senior events this year. Any questions?
Um, for the discipline, for number five.
Yep.
You're saying that once they are disciplined, they will go to the alternative school?
So for these four kids, there is a disciplinary event. The school makes a recommendation for expulsion. One of two things happens in an expulsion. Either I meet with the family and we come to what's called an expulsion agreement, we write everything out, and both sides agree to what the consequence for the issue will be, or if we can't come to an agreement, then that family has the right to go to a board hearing. Ninety-nine percent of our expellable events have resulted in an expulsion agreement. I think the last time we had a hearing was before COVID, probably. So yes, this is an agreement between the family for that Coach Street incident that both the family agrees with and the district agrees of what will happen. And it's for, for these kids, it's for a set period of time, and for us, for these kids, it is usually alt-ed or cyber. For the other kids, that's what I was talking about, Job Corps, they're not on here yet. These are all alt-ed and cyber solutions.
Okay, so for Coach Street, right?
Mm-hmm, that's where the incident happened.
Right, is that on our property?
So the incident started on the high school property and continued onto Coach Street, so because there's a connection back to the high school, we are allowed to discipline for that incident.
Even that happened on Coach Street, which is not on our property?
Yeah, the language is that there's a nexus to the school, that there's a connection. It actually started with the group of kids and the victim, let's say, interacting on our high school property. It was moving and continued across the Sharon Hill property. The end result assault happened on Coach Street. So because there's a connection to the school, we can go all the way through with the incident.
Okay, for number six.
Yep.
For Job Corps.
Yep.
How can a student be interested in the Job Corps? Do they have to be at the alt, at the alt school?
No, they do not. So just to be clear, the four kids that I'm referencing that are coming next month, that is part of their expulsion agreement.
Okay.
But kids in general who are interested in Job Corps, they talk to their counselor, they get referred, and then they can have those conversations with Job Corps, again, hoping that they're staying with us so they get both the certification and the high school diploma at the end of that path.
So suppose they can't stay on site. Transportation, do they, we provide transportation?
They take care of that.
Who take, oh, Job Corps takes care of that?
So for, if they're going to the local site, they take care of transportation. If they're going to what I'm calling the trade site, like the Poconos or Harrisburg, they live at that site.
Oh, they would live at that site?
Yes, and it's part of the Job Corps program, we are not paying for that.
So what requirement does the students need to have to join the Job Corps training?
Yep, so it's mostly a conversation with the kids that they may not be completing high school through the traditional sense of going to classes for four years and graduating with a diploma. If that looks like it may be an issue and they have an interest in a trade, all they really need to do at this point is start the conversation with the counselor, or start the conversation with their parent to start with the counselor, and then we put them on Job Corps' radar. Once they meet with Job Corps, that's a much more detailed conversation with the student about, here's what our program will expect of you, and then they either sign up for it or they don't. If they sign up for it, then that is essentially their high school, college, and career-ready path at that point. If they say, "Job Corps is not for me," then they come back to us and we have to figure out what we're going to do with them. Are they going back to the Academy Park? Is alt-ed a possibility? Is cyber a better possibility? Do we look into work-study? So it's sort of a combination discussion and determination of what's the best path for this kid.
So what does the student have to do? Do they have to talk to their counselor?
They need to start, they need to gauge, to tell the counselor of their interest, and then they need to attend what they call an orientation or an intake meeting with Job Corps. We'll look at all the details and the, is this what you really want to do?
So you're saying that a student in high school, what about a student in high school in tenth grade that doesn't want to pursue their education in Academy Park? So from tenth grade, can they go to Job Corps or?
Not really. So there are rules about, let's say, dropping out, and again, these kids are not dropping out, they're staying on a roll.
Right, but I'm asking for the ones that.
The traditional dropout, it sort of pairs back, so if they're eighteen, they get to make their own decisions. If they are seventeen, and we have policy on this, I'm trying to picture what it says, if they're seventeen, it is something around either they need parent permission or parent permission and gainful employment. There's even more strict requirements if they're sixteen, and I don't believe you can drop out pre-sixteen.
You can't, wait a minute, you're saying that you can't drop out?
You can't officially drop out. I mean, can you just stop showing up to school?
So it would be truancy?
That would be the truancy.
Okay, it would be truancy.
When I say drop out, you are officially notifying the school that you are not coming anymore and you are pursuing a different option.
Right, yeah, I understand the meaning, but, so my next question is, how does the parents are informed of the Job Corps?
So once we have the agreement in place, what we need to do is sort of like we do with the dual enrollment program, is we need to make, we need to make the kids who are potentially eligible for it aware. Now, we also don't want to send the message of, you don't have to go to high school anymore, here's another option for you, it has to be a balance.
Right.
But much like we do with the community college with dual enrollment, there needs to be an advisory of certain groups of kids in this probably eleventh and twelfth grade, maybe not even every eleventh grader, but just that they know that's an option. But we are required, when a kid is even thinking about, again, the traditional dropout kid, we're required by policy and by state code to have a conversation with that kid about, okay, you're talking about this, here's what we're telling you your options are, and Job Corps should be one of those options.
Right, but I mean, I understand that, but when you are talking to the kids, are you also talking to the parents?
Yes.
That's my question.
On eighteen, we need a parent too.
Right, so how do you communicate with the parents right along with the teacher, the student?
So that would be through the counselor. So if a kid goes to their counselor and says, "Hey, I'm interested in Job Corps," after that initial conversation, should be a phone call to the parent saying, "Hey, just letting you know, Miss So-and-so, your son was just in here asking about Job Corps." Is that a conversation that they've had with you? Do you need any information? Is there any way that I can help you? Those conversations need to be, need to be happening preferably together, but if not, at least right after each other.
Okay, so the students, the ages, is from sixteen or what?
To twenty-one.
To twenty-one?
Students technically have a right to a public education until twenty-one.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem. I'm running.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan.
What'd he say? He's running.
Not yet. I believe the deadline is either the twenty-first or twenty-second because we had to build in the spring break time, so we can let you know what we have at that point, and then hopefully a decision on that Thursday's board meeting, but if it needs to get pushed, we could, not that I'm asking anybody to come again, you could have the special board meeting. My only concern isn't the front end, it's leaving the new company enough time on the back end to be open for the start of school. We ran into that problem with the Y.
Right, so you put, I'm sorry, you done, Ms. Harris Johnson? Oh, go ahead.
And even when we get the proposals, we have to open them, we have to review them, we may want to schedule interviews, but they, the deadline has not been hit yet.
So you're saying that nobody has applied yet?
I don't think so, no, yet. But again, the deadline isn't till at least a week and a half from now.
A week and a half, so that's when you guys come back?
We will come back.
From the holidays?
Probably at the pre-session, we will say, we've got five, I'm making up the number. We've got five companies that are interested in the before and after care. Is the board interested in an interview process, in an administrative selective process, in a combination, but we have to know who's who first before we can have that.
Right, so when was the application out? When did you put the ad out?
We haven't put that, we haven't put a official ad. We're putting a news release out tomorrow, it's been posted on the website, and we're going to be posting it in the paper.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Ryan. Dr. Guy Laurie?
Hi, good evening, everyone. Just a couple of quick things. Numbers eight, nine, ten, and eleven are for the proposal to upgrade fiber optic lines in our four elementary buildings. These are replacements for some antiquated technology and some antiquated lines that are running in our elementary buildings for IT infrastructure, data transfer, and whatnot. Number twelve is for the continuation, the re-up of our agreement with Edmentum. Edmentum provides us with a bunch of different solutions, including ExactPath, tutorials, courseware, and whatnot. This is an intervention program, it's also used for our credit recovery programs at our high school. That's a three-year agreement. And number thirteen is our monthly field trip updated list. There's going to be one modification to the field trip list. Abington High School will be added as a site that's not on the current supporting documents that is being attached, or is a program that's going to be running there that we found out about today, and we're going to include that in on that. That's all. Do you want to talk about?
It's the student leadership form that we get originally today, and we took the high school student back in February, and this is in mid-February, and originally scheduled for Upper Marion High School, but they changed and I don't think that's.
It's for the student leadership form. It was a trip that was originally scheduled in February to Upper Marion High School, but it was postponed due to the Philadelphia Eagles Parade, and now it has been rescheduled for May the twentieth, and it'll be at Abington Area High School. And it's for leadership.
So, Dr. Laurie, I have a question about ExactPath. So since we are now using STARS for assessment, will kids, like I know some lesson plans and some other things are done on ExactPath, but will the assessments with ExactPath stop? I just, I want to make sure we're not over-assessing our children, we're not using the assessment program for ExactPath anymore, and if so, is it included in this contract? Just to make sure we're not paying for it.
Great question. So if you guys remember, that was part of why we wanted to go to STAR as our primary progress monitoring and benchmarking kind of software program that we use. So STAR is our K-12 assessment that we give for all students, K-12. Edmentum and ExactPath has an agreement, and they have a reciprocity agreement with Renaissance STAR, so that when the students take the STAR assessment, the data automatically feeds into ExactPath. So there's no need for two assessments or three assessments. The data from STAR automatically, without any intervention from the school district, automatically syncs, and those pathways that students then partake in are all completely based upon the STAR data.
Okay, great, so just one quick follow-up question to that. So does that mean, because we're now also paying for STARS, is this contract a little cheaper than the, like, did it save us any money with ExactPath, or are we still paying the same amount we would have paid if we still used their assessment?
So our agreement shows the STAR integration platform, like if you look at the agreement as the related documentation, it says in there that we're paying for the ExactPath intervention suite, we're paying for the tutorials program, we're paying for courseware, and we're paying for that integration for all those components coming together. There's cost savings for three-year agreements versus one-year agreement. I couldn't tell you what the initial agreement was when ExactPath first came into the school district, but there is pricing agreements that decrease the cost for a multi-year term.
Okay, great, thank you, Dr. Laurie.
Dr. Larry, I do have a question for you, so don't move.
I'm not.
For CoStar, CoStar, okay, explain to me, as someone that is not an educator, CoStar is a program for children, like a computer thing, or what is it?
So Mr. Butler can probably take more of that, but CoStars is a general purchasing parameters that allow for discounted rates and whatnot through non-negotiated terms, but I'll let Mr. Butler talk more.
Yeah, Dr. Laurie is correct. It's a program that will go out and pre-bid different options for different selections that are customary for school districts or popular within school districts. They will do all the bidding and they will set the rates, and then we can circumvent doing the bidding process ourselves because the state has already done it. There's other programs, CoStars, there is PEPM, and then there is Sourcewell is another organization where they take the initiative to do all the bidding for educational institutions.
Okay, okay, so you using this entity to do the bidding for us, correct?
Right, it's already done.
Is that what you're saying?
It's already done.
Oh, it's already done?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and this is for all the elementary schools?
For elementary schools. So there is like a main trunk in each building where the data all comes in, and then it branches out in terms of the building where we have Wi-Fi access points, where you have drops in classrooms. This is upgrading the main patch lines in the building so that if a device can pull a certain throughput of data, that the connections throughout the building are up to that level. As of right now, from our Director of Technology, some of these pipes that are in our building, these fiber optic pipes are very, very antiquated, and we're not getting the maximum throughput that we possibly could.
So once you do, once they do the bidding for you guys, who do they meet with? You and Mr. Butler, or, I mean, how does that go?
No, so the bidding is already done.
It's already done?
It's done for, they make an assumption for the entire state. They take a survey of what some of the needs are, what some of the needs have been, and they will bid out equipment, they will build out, I'm sorry, bid out equipment, they will bid out services, service providers, and those service providers will do the installation. They bid out, like I said, for products, so you can get bidded prices on the fiber lines, for example, or if we do computers, they will do computers as well, but the lower prices come through CDW in this case.
Oh, great, so you and Dr. Guy are in charge of this?
Well, we work as a team.
We work as a team, okay, that's what I meant. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Dr. Laurie. So we are going to move on to finance with Mr. Butler.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I have six items on the agenda tonight and then one brief presentation. So item one is, these are traditional resolutions that happen every year. It's one, two, three, and four are traditional. The first is Delaware County Community College. This is for our share of the, of our portion of the community college program. That's, this year it's three hundred sixty-nine thousand, one hundred fifteen. Item two is Delaware County Intermediate Unit. This is our portion of their general fund budget, which amounts to twenty-eight thousand, five hundred seventy-eight, fourteen cents. Number three is Delaware County Technical High School Budget, and our portion this year is seven hundred twenty-four thousand, four hundred eighty-eight. The item four is the Delaware County Intermediate, this is the Special Education Program, and this is the program for students that are placed via the IU. Our portion this year is, amounts to two million, three hundred fifty-three thousand, nine hundred eighty-nine. Item five is a placeholder. I put it there, this is for, as you know, last month, we did our board member that would participate or be a member of the IU board. For some reason, I'm thinking that there's a comprehensive list that we have to approve, but I just put this on here as a placeholder, so this could end up being removed from the agenda at the legislative meeting. Item six is the final proposed budget. Again, this is not the final general fund budget, it is a proposed budget, but we have to do this traditionally each year, just to get it on the table. It gets posted on the website, and these numbers, they're blank right now, they will be, this information will be populated along with an updated presentation next week before, no, next week, I will do it next week, so it gives everyone time to look at it. So you'll receive another presentation and this resolution with the numbers filled in next week for the legislative week, legislative meeting the week after, and that will give folks time to just look over, again, this is not the final. From that point forward, we still have a lot of hard work to do from the April meeting until the final vote, which is planned for June twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-five. Any questions? Okay, the presentation packet that you have is brief, this is just a quick update on, for the most part, will be salary and benefit information. So you will recall that in the previous meetings, I had object codes three hundred through nine hundred. Those, the three hundred through nine hundred is a maintenance budget, meaning that I try to maintain the same budget amounts, and these are the same budget amounts for twenty-four, twenty-five. So as we continue to have discussions about new initiatives or any changes in program, these numbers could be plus or minus, but the plan is not ticked. these numbers could be plus or minus, but the plan is not to exceed the previous year. With that being said, you will see on page three, I'm sorry, the salary and benefit lines, and this is what is calculated at this time as a proposed 25, 26. Again, these numbers will continually be reviewed up until the budget is adopted in June. Looking at pages four through seven, I'm sorry, four through six, this is just an overview of the staffing chart. So, what I did this year, you will see in the left-hand column, it will talk... The positions are regular ed, special ed, special... Regular ed aides, special education aides. That column is self-explanatory, and these are the positions by location. So, for example, on the first line, we have 37 regular ed teachers at Darby Township, 39 at Delcroft, 49 at Harris, 41 at Sharon Hill, 18 at the K Center, 73 at AP Academy Park, and 12 at Knight Academy. Excuse me, I forgot a T on Knight. And then, the same thing goes for the special education teachers at these locations as well. And sometimes, these numbers are fluid and could be different from the previous year because we did have some changes in location for some of the special ed programming from last year to this year. Or for... I'm sorry. From the 23, 24 year to the 24, 25, there were some building changes, which are reflected in these numbers, too. So, this is just to give you an idea of what the staffing looks like at each of the buildings and the positions, and the numbers that we have in each. Going to page five, it has from the superintendent's office down to facility support. This also... Just as a point of clarification, this... You will see it has administrators and support staff built in to these numbers. The last page on... Is six of this graph, of this chart, rather, and it ends... Begins with the balance of the facilities and maintenance team, and will go down to athletic administration. The total, and these are budgeted positions, some of these positions are still vacant, but we are closer and closer in filling all of the positions. But sometimes, there are retirements, or there are folks that just leave through attrition. So, some of the positions are not filled. Very few are not filled, but the positions are in the budget. So, that 651 are positions that are in the budget as of right now. And again, that could change as we go along, plus or minus. Page seven is just the calendar, the process calendar. So, we're up to April 10th. The legislative meeting is on April 24th. As I mentioned earlier, there will be another packet, a more comprehensive presentation packet, that will be sent out next week with those numbers filled in on finance item number six on the agenda. Any questions?
Mr. Butler?
Yes.
Me, all the way down here. On page four, I just wanted to make sure that the numbers were correct for the guidance counselors per school. It says Darby Township has one and Harris has three. Should it be two and two?
That could be a change. We did have a meeting, and I have to look at my notes to make sure I got that right. It could be that I did not relocate a position to the correct school, so I'll check that out.
Thank you.
Are there any more... Any other questions for Mr. Butler? Thank you very much, Mr. Butler. I'm going to ask Mrs. Woolley the mic for the HR items.
Good evening, Board. Good evening, audience.
Good evening.
I'm here to present the Human Resources of the Board Agenda for the next five pages. At the top, we want to recognize two retirements from the district. Michelle Gengelio, she's our science teacher at the OT Ed School. She has served the district for 13 years and is retiring this school year. Mr. Donald Seis, he's a van driver. He works for the Bus Depot, and he has served the district for 11 years, and this is his last school year. So, we want to recognize those two employees. Number two, we're ratifying the resignation of a professional employee. Number two... Three, we're approving the resignation of a confidential employee. Number four, number five, over to page number five, at the top, there are six classified employees that have resigned. Number seven, we want to go into the new hires. We lost two professionals, but we gained five professionals in the teachers' union. With number seven, number eight, flipping over to page six, at the top, with the social worker. Number nine, 10, and 11, we're asking for approval for the leave of absences listed there on those sections. At the bottom of page six, we have 12, ratify the following employee for Communications Crew for the Delcroft School. Number 13, ratify the following employee as the Communications Crew for the Sharon Hill School. Page number seven. Number 14, approve the following supplemental contract for the District Musical. Number 15, approve the following supplemental contracts at the Darby Township School for the 24, 25 school year, the STEM Clubs. The names are listed there. Number 16, approve the following employees for the Extended School Year Program at the Delcroft School. The names are listed there. Number 17, approve the following employees for the Pre-K Summer Camp at the Darby Township School. Number 18, approve the following employees as curriculum writers for the Academy Park High School. Number 19, approve the following employees as part of the Mentor Program for the school year. Page eight, at the top, approve the following special education teachers to write IEPs during the summer at a rate without students of $28 an hour. Number 21, approve the following school psychologist to work this summer 2025. Number 22, approve the following speech pathologist to work during the summer of 2025. And number 23, approve the employment of the following support staff employees to serve as substitute secretaries slash receptionists during the 2025, 26 summer school year, and the names are listed there. Any questions?
Yes, I have a question. For number 23, I'm kind of lost there. The employment of the following support staff employees to serve as a substitute secretary? So, you're saying that they have to do both jobs?
So, they're 10-month employees, and so there are work stops in the...
Oh, they're 10-month employees?
Yes, so to give a lot of support to our full-time employees, so that, you know, they can take vacations, or, you know, we need coverage during the summer. So, we're asking the attendance clerks to fill in when they're on vacation in the summer. They're all in the same bargaining group.
The 10-month are going to help cover the 12-months who are out there.
Got you. Okay, okay. You had me lost for a minute.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a couple of questions. So, first, the follow-up on Ms. Woodfall's question. So, then, should number 23 say for the summer instead of the 2025, 26 school year? Maybe that's why it was confusing?
Yes.
So, we could adjust that for next week? And then, also, I have questions on number seven and number 18. Number seven is really just my lack of knowledge. I know we voted on this new position for the kindergarten center, the school-based instructional specialist. Is it possible you could send the Board a job description to review if that exists?
Sure.
Because I feel like in the 1-8 buildings and in the high school, those positions are based a lot around the standardized testing, so I just want to kind of wrap my brain around what that person will be doing at the K Center. And then, also, for number 18, so I see in some of the other things that we're approving, like the IEPs for the summer, you see the pricing. So, for the curriculum writers, are the teachers getting additional pay for that? And will I be able to find the cost of that in the contract, in the teachers' union contract?
Thank you, Dr. Woodfall.
And if there is a cost, can we add that to the agenda for next week?
So, anytime a... This is with the non-student rate. So, the non-student rate is $28 an hour, and it's a fixed amount of hours for each curricular area that the individuals would write for. Eight hours for pacing and eight hours for unit planning. So, it'd be 16 hours total for each content area. Let's just say Algebra II. There'll be 16 hours of compensation at $28 an hour.
Okay, so that's the same rate that's for the IEP writers as well?
Yep, there's two rates, with student rate and non-student rate. Since this is just work to revamp our high school curriculum, it'll be done at the non-student rate, since there won't be kids enough.
All right, great. Thank you so much.
Mr. Larry, can you explain to me what an instructional specialist is, and what do they do?
Sure. So, our school-based instructional specialists involve everything from data analysis to leading PLC meetings, to supporting teachers in classrooms with best practices, to coordinating with MTSS, looking at student data, everything to do with curriculum instruction, data analysis. They're not administrators. They're part of the SDEA bargaining unit, so they're not evaluators, they're not rating officers, but these individuals work heavily with curriculum instruction, assessment, data monitoring, and whatnot. So, for example, when we roll out a new initiative, when we roll out something involving math, for example, I will be coming and talking to you about our math next steps, where we want to go with math instruction, moving since the DCIU, that contract will be coming to an end. But we also want to ensure that our teacher leaders, the folks that are supporting our teachers, have the best practice knowledge available. So, we would want to train and supplement our SBISs with knowledge, so they can then go back into the buildings, perform turnaround training, lead professional development, and support with a lot of the standards alignment, a lot of the curriculum work that we're doing.
Okay, so this is not aligned to the state's standards and instructional specialist?
So, the SBISs, they absolutely review building-level data. They support their principles with looking at assessment.
Yes, but are they aligned? So, is the instructional specialist aligned only to...
No.
The state...
To stand state testing? No, it's part of their role, but no, it is not a... It's not like a testing coordinator.
Okay, just want to be clear.
Like, the job description is pretty... It's very multifaceted, so there's all kinds of things that are...
So, I mean, they'll be analyzing data, but they're not aligned with the state's standard testing?
No, the position is not created to focus on standardized testing.
Okay, thank you. I have a question for you. I want to piggyback what Meta President was saying for the school-based instructional I don't know if this is a dumb question or not, but does this fall under a coach/teacher? Because...
It could. So, we have two very different classifications. I think it was two years ago, the Board of Directors approved the addition of teacher coaches, which we put into place at the beginning of this academic year. They report to Dr. Smack, and so far, our teacher coaches, we only have three for the whole district, but our teacher coaches have been supporting in every single building and classrooms across the district. That is a direct coaching model that, again, is non-evaluative. The school-based instructional specialists are, again, teachers. They are in SDEA. They are teachers by trade, and they're teachers by position, but they carry a little bit of a leadership team role.
Okay.
So, they are not administrators, they're not teachers, but they support...
They support.
Everything that I've said. So, can an SBIS and do SBISs go into classrooms and support teachers? Absolutely.
But doesn't it... Because it sounds like it's similar, because as the coach/teacher, that's why I'm trying to understand the difference between instructional specialist and...
And a coach?
Yes.
So, coach would only be focusing on... Like, this year, we put a strong emphasis on first and second-year teachers. We have a plethora of new teachers in our district, and our new teacher coaches supported with new teachers. That is their job, that's responsible.
Okay.
And they have a caseload of teachers that they support. SBIS, you could walk into a building, you could walk into any of our schools, they could be leading a PLC meeting at 8 o'clock, then they could be running STAR reports and looking at data. They could then be working with teachers, performing STAR, helping our teachers provide the STAR assessment. Then, they could be providing coaching for a teacher, pulling small groups. A lot of our SBISs also pull intervention groups and work individually with students.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, so, non-agenda items. I just want to bring to everybody's attention and employees listening, that open enrollment for benefits begins on May 12th and ends on May 23rd. We had, for the health and well-being of our employees, we had a biometric screening at the high schools, having a turnout for that. And Smoothie Day is coming in May.
Excuse me, Mrs. Woolley. What was the date for the benefit open enrollment? You said the 12th?
May 12th through May 23rd. There needs to be a change there.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Smoothie Day is coming. So, we attended three job fairs this week, Westchester, DCIU, and Eastern University. We got a lot of applications. We got a lot of people that came up to the table and was very interested. We have at least 25 certified teachers that are interested in working at our district.
Wow.
We're just trying to find jobs for them. So, before we went, I put a mailer out to at least 164 attendees to the DCIU Job Fair, and they all really, literally came up to the table and had interest in working at the district. So, just pictures of our table, we have lights with the... Our logo in it, our tablecloth, mini yard signs. If you gave us a resume and you filled out an application, you got a water bottle or a mug, we ran out. So, but it was... They were very successful this week, and we went to three. I just want to bring it to everybody's attention. We got new yard signs coming for the Bus Depot. We need to hire bus drivers, so yard signs are coming.
Oh, my goodness.
These are even signs that you can put on your front lawn of your home, so we'll have extras there, because we're in need of CBL drivers, bus drivers, bus monitors for our district. Okay?
You going to put it in the front outside the ESC?
Yes, and we're looking to put them on the side of our buses as well.
Wow. I have a question for you. You said that you went to three job fairs?
Yes, Eastern University, Westchester.
Wait, wait, what'd you say?
Eastern University.
Uh-huh.
DCIU had one, and then Westchester University.
DCIU?
Yes.
And where?
Westchester.
Westchester. Thank you.
You're welcome. So, I will be sending out an email. If you're interested, just reply back if you want us to send you some yard signs or pocket cards that you can pass out in the community. Okay?
I would be interested. I'll let you know now. You can put it in my yard.
Yes, thank you.
Yep.
I do want to say, the District Musical is coming up, which is a good time to put out different information at the shows, put out a little table display of, hey, we're hiring, because we got families coming in from all over. You never know.
Great idea. Thank you. Thank you.
And now you have to see all six of them.
Yeah. That's okay. It's all good. Any questions? Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Woolley. Dr. Ryan?
We're not going to do parent student advisor?
That's what I was saying.
Parent student advisor.
Oh. I can do the policy. Policy's quick. All the policies are second readings from last month. Four of them are just PA code changes about law enforcement. That would be numbers one, two, four, and seven. And then, number three is about how long we let non-resident family live here. We talked about all those parameters last time. That's in... Was approved as a first reading last time. Number five, just lets military children of the National Guard be protected for enrollment. And number six is about charging home districts when they send kids to live here in our district, and we have to educate them, mainly one of our two-to-three group homes in Collingdale and Sharon Hill. All were first readings, no questions. All were first readings, no questions, so we're hoping they all get approved, and there will be adopted policy. Any questions?
Thank you very much, Dr. Ryan, Dr. Foreman, Ms. Oliver. I believe you're going to be co-presenting on the parent student advisory, or is it just Dr. Foreman?
Just Dr. Foreman. We did not have any updates this week, but we will have when we come before the Board for a formal meeting next time. We're planning tonight.
Thank you very much. And we have, we don't have any property items nor safety.
Dr. Sanchez, I have a question for you for safety.
Yes, ma'am.
I think it was the last time that Mr. Jeremiah was expressing about the cameras. Do you have any update on that?
We don't have an update, other than the Board just approved two weeks ago or a week ago the agreement for us to move forward. So, we're moving forward to have all that fixed.
Okay, I just wanted to know. Thank you.
You're welcome.
May I ask a question about safety and security real quick that I just, I don't need the answer tonight if it's not possible? I just, I don't recall, are the Cardinal Point and Safe Corridors contracts up at the end of this school year?
I can answer that. So, the Cardinal Point contract is due to expire this year, and we are making the decision to hire internal. HR has already started with the advertisement. We have 10 positions that we're filling, and we have plenty of applicants to be able to go through. The need for Cardinal Point years ago was because, coming out of the pandemic, it was difficult to fill those positions. The Safe Corridors contract is already approved. I think they have more, a multi-year approval this time.
So, at this time, we want to thank everyone for coming to the meeting. We got out pretty early today. There will be no executive session this evening. So, thank you for coming out. Be safe going home, and have a great night.